Thirty-three, I'm going to call the meeting to order. I will read the suggested disclaimer. In accordance with Governor Suny's emergency order number 12 pursuant to executive order 2020-4, this board is authorized to be electronically. Information and connection links to the meeting are provided on the town of Plymouth website. Your roll call. Mark?
I've got to learn this mute thing, I'm a little slow.
See you staying here. Phil?
Here.
Mary Ann?
Here.
Bonnie?
Here.
And Rebecca, I am here, and we have Juliet from the town. Do you have anyone in the audience today?
No.
Alright, so I would suggest for folks watching at home, and Jules, please correct me if I am misunderstanding how things are available through Penny Baker TV, but we went through and answered a lot of questions and talked through the reason behind the zoning ordinance changes that we're proposing. So I would suggest people go back to our meeting on the first of October and review that. Just to save me from having to talk through it again, I think we spoke through it fairly well in the last meeting. So I would suggest that. So for the board, let's review our minutes from that meeting from the first of October. Any comments on those minutes? I have a question that maybe other folks in the board can ask or answer. Under the abutter from Longview Farm, says something about, he asked the board to reach out to the Romney Planning Board as they had issues with the Fatherland Trust. Now, I'm understanding correctly that the Fatherland Family Trust is the applicant, right?
Yes.
Yes.
And did he say that the Romney Planning Board has had trouble with the applicant?
I believe he made that claim.
Okay, alright. That's why I just, I didn't quite make that connection when he said that, so I just, yeah, hearing somebody else.
That was, I recall hearing him say that.
Absolutely, I vividly remember that as well.
Alright, awesome, alright, so then I have no corrections to the minutes. Does anyone else have corrections to the minutes?
Nope.
Would anyone like to make a motion on that minute?
I make a motion, we approve the minutes of 10:1.
I'll second.
Thank you Bonnie, alright.
You're welcome.
Unless there's any discussion. I will read the roll, please signify your intent to approve by saying aye or nay and the opposite. Mark?
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
Mary Ann?
Aye.
Bonnie?
Aye.
And me, Rebecca, aye. Okay, so next up on the agenda, I think there's probably a few things we can talk about with the zoning ordinance. Jules, did you want to talk about the map at all? I couldn't open that second link, that link you sent out this afternoon.
Oh, okay, weird.
It required a password.
Oh, okay.
I didn't have any trouble.
That's weird, huh? Could you open it?
Yeah, I could open it.
I don't think I could, actually.
Oh, okay, so you didn't see this?
No.
Okay, well, I guess I could just send it around as a JPG from now on. Yeah, so this is the map. And it's just, it's just a draft, but shoot your corrections my way and I'll try to fix it.
Yeah, I think there's obviously the complication, the trickiness of the meandering streams. Mill Brook being one, that's the one that comes, it's just to the east of Yeton Road. And then the, and the other, obviously those two zones will, I think you kind of maybe corrected that, will flush up to each other. And then the other thing is, certainly, we can discuss this as a board, but right where the Baker takes the pretty hairpin corner, right above Lot 36. To me, it doesn't make sense, I can't tell if that makes sense to have the end of the zone be the edge of the river and not have a tiny piece of that zone be on the other side of the Baker.
So, I have thoughts on that. Being that we have language that addresses zones partially in use and the fact that, so I think if we leave the line there and it puts a little bit of that Lot 6 in a different zone, I don't think it's much of an issue in reality because the majority of it is out, but I think the bigger thing for me is that if you think about the Plymouth Town Line between Plymouth and Holderness and the fact that we currently have a chunk of land that is on the other side of the Penny River is a reminder that rivers change and we shouldn't, you know, if we're proposing a zoning boundary that stands alone on its own, I don't think we should move it around a river because the channel of the river may abandon that at some point and then we'd be stuck with a weird bump in the line that doesn't necessarily correspond to anything anymore.
I think that's a great point, Phil. And I think especially on a super big bend like that, yeah. What are your thoughts on the existing zone on the western boundary using Mill Brook as the boundary?
Yeah, that I tried to correct a little bit here.
I think that that channel is probably less likely to change, but
I agree with that as well.
Okay, so this should be filled in along this river line, right? I mean, not filled in, go right up to the river line or not?
The reason why it makes sense is this is, I keep trying to gesture to the screen like you can see what my hand is doing, that the existing, what is that, the ICD ends at Mill Brook and the ag starts on the western edge of that, so if we don't have it, we'll have to change more, I think.
Yeah, this should be filled in, so, right to the edge of the river, is that what you're saying? Then?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just where the existing boundary is between the ag and the ICD.
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
Alright. What were some other trouble spots? And then we had
That looks good.
This to follow. And then, let me just, sorry about the zooming.
Oh, it's returning to look at the
Yeah, this is kind of weird and funky down here, but I think I had a question down here. Yeah, I'm going to make this thicker, you know, so you could see it better, but so I just had it follow the bound, the town line.
Yeah, I see a little of it impinging into the single-family residential and I don't think we ever, I think it's pretty much anywhere that agriculture, that's south, goes gateway 500 feet from the road.
Say that again, please, sorry.
Can you scroll up a little bit, so we're looking closer to the downtown area, Jules?
Yep.
Okay, once it sort of, we, oh. There we go, so the single-family residential, I did not think we were going to have the gateway dig into the single-family residential.
Yeah, I don't think that makes sense there.
So I think it's anywhere south of the downtown area that's agriculture. Within a 500 foot distance from the road.
So what we're looking at there, would, are you proposing that, I think it would go actually all the way up, slightly further north to the downtown area, right?
Exactly, yeah.
That little
Up to the, sorry, the Village Commercial.
Okay.
So that that last center point can go up higher, but then we're only going to take the east, we're not going to pull that, anything out of single-family residential for gateway, we're just going to pull it out of that ag to the right?
Oh, okay.
Right?
Yeah.
Alright, so
Yeah, I guess I haven't looked at it in detail that much.
Anyway.
Make it work.
We'll make it work. Alright. We can get that. Okay, to east, not west.
Any other, I mean, I can't see the whole thing, but as long as this one's 500
Yeah.
Bridgewater Town Line. And then the entire Highway Commercial to the north on Route 3, that all becomes gateway.
Okay, so this changes only in name?
Well, I mean, it doesn't change in shape. It changes in name and in function a bit, but
Right.
As far as this map is concerned.
Yeah, I think, I think when we discussed it, we said we would take the whole entirety of the existing Highway Commercial, change that to Gateway and then add the other areas within 500 feet of, you know, the west end of Tenny Mountain Highway 3A and then Route 3 South out of town. So I think you've got it there.
Alright, you wanted to come, I guess I had a question about
How far down to go there?
This, I felt like you wanted it
I thought we wanted to go further down to the entrance
The Tenny Mountain Highway entrance.
Tenny Mountain High, or the Tenny Mountain Ski Area, right?
Oh, did you, okay. Alright.
Which I don't know, we could make the case to go further too, but
It seems funny to cut it off right at the entryway, I wonder if, I think we should at least go like 500 feet down?
Yeah.
You know, is there a reason for us to say no Gateway District development just south of that, or is it?
It's a little further south.
Is it, okay.
Because that road goes up a side.
Just right here?
Yeah.
I thought that's where it was, oh, I did, okay, I put the green dots there.
Okay.
But I did not go to that, that's where you want it then?
Yeah, I think that was it.
Okay, so, I didn't see them, they were too small, so right here then?
Did you want to go further south, Rebecca?
I don't know, does it make sense to go like 500 feet past the entrance there?
In a way, it does.
Alright. So
It's not really gonna
It feels very arbitrary at this point.
Right. It's unlikely to affect any development in that area, but I think out of principle, if we're using a 500-foot boundary and going to that point, it would make sense to go 500 feet past it as well.
Okay, so 500 feet south of where the dots are.
I think it really might only affect Lot 48 as future development unless somebody changes lots 18 and 19.
Jules, I think it's 500 feet south of the road itself, not, because the dot looks like it's a little bit south of the entrance.
500 feet of this?
Yeah.
Then, okay.
Makes sense.
We can measure that.
I think it's having a meaningful marker to say 500 feet from Okay, so I think maybe we can move on, is anyone else good with this? Maybe we can look at the map itself. I think what's actually more meaningful, I mean, it's easy to look at it in the map, but what we need to have is a the actual written description of the zone where it goes. And that just means that everything, all the zones, almost all the zones will have to get re-described many
So, so if you could take a look at this in the next, whenever, I tried to break this down and I'm sure there's going to be some corrections and whatever, but if I had to have a current and a proposed?
Yeah, I saw this in the folder, I took a look at it.
Okay.
I think maybe this might be good to, I mean, I didn't get a chance to really look at it, I'm guessing not many other people did. I think maybe this is a good committee discussion. But just on first glance, I want to address the institutional use church in the rural residential and the 35-foot height limit on, in a couple zones, and I can't remember if we had talked about that, so.
Yeah, I just took from the zoning sheets that I had that were probably from September, so I don't know if I have the most recent one. And then I had questions. You know, just, okay, so you've got on this sheet that I have from the zoning committee, the uses are retail and personal services. There's some things that don't match up with what we have in our zoning book, the ordinance, so
Okay.
You could take a look at that.
Okay, I think it might be easiest if we look at this either in committee or when the rest, we have a little bit more time. Has anyone else taken a look at this?
Yeah, I just put it up like not long ago, so
Okay, yeah, I think this maybe is a good, seeing the stuff boiled down is, you know, because I think the idea of permitted use is something we were trying, sort of wrapping around how we thought about that a little bit. So I think, I think, yeah, having the committee chat about this. Phil, does that make sense to you?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Alright. Phil, did you hear that?
Sorry, I Go ahead, say it again.
I can't really see your face from so far away anyway, so I just wanted to say you agree that bringing this sort of summary sheet back to the zoning subcommittee might be a good idea.
Sorry, yes, I did, I, there was a lull, I said yes and then I wondered if I'd missed something after that, so
No, 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 I didn't hear the yes.
No, that sounds good.
Yeah, okay.
Yep.
Alright. Any other thoughts on the names of the zones? Okay. Any other zoning conversation before we move on?
My only comment is I still like Gateway District as opposed to Highway Commercial. I'm on the fence with Tenny Mountain Highway Mixed Use District only because it's so wordy. But, you know, I think it gets at the concept of mixed use. And then, I mean, maybe it would make sense to just take Tenny Mountain Highway out of there and just call it the Mixed Use District.
Or mud for short.
Hadn't thought about that. Yeah, and then Rural Residential, I mean, is, I guess it gets at the function, but it's, it is muddy still. I think Steve, I don't think Steve was as crazy about that either, but I'm not sure a better alternative there.
Okay. So what I'm seeing as the next steps for this process is the maps, I think, are good for presentation's sake. And then have, we need to have a written description of each of the zones. So the real changes to the zoning ordinance are the, basically just what Jules just showed, the setbacks, density, percent lot coverage, maximum height, things like that. And so those are the actual changes to the zoning ordinance, so we'll have to present those. And then we, so we'll need to have those written out. And then I think it makes the most sense, does it make the most sense to present these one at each zone separately in case? I'm just thinking about how this might pass, is Tenny Mountain mud more likely to pass than the rural residential? So we present it as a separate item on the warrant?
My thinking is to do it all as one, unless we really anticipate that people are going to be in favor of one and not the other. I think that we should presume that people will see value in everything and understand that we're trying to make it better and hopefully we'll get enough support to pass it all at once. And if we, if we have to take another swing at this in a future year, I think that would be okay. I'd be surprised if we'd get that much opposition based on how I've seen the outcome of voting in town in the past.
I'm inspired by your optimism, Phil.
Granted, I mean, it's up for discussion if people feel like, if there's, you know, I'm certainly not in touch with everybody, if anyone is, here's, you know, concern or is, you know, we haven't gotten a lot of feedback from hearings yet, so, you know, I would take that as people are in support of.
Madam Chair, may I ask a question about that and the hearings? Are, can we shoot for a early December hearing? For the first public hearing?
We need to have two public hearings for this, right?
So, I looked pretty heavily into it. You need to schedule two, you only need to hold one and two if necessary. It looks like if we have the December public hearing for the work session, we schedule a tentative January. We have plenty of time to get it, it's only five Tuesdays from annual meeting. So we'll have plenty of time and that'll give us time to assemble the whole, the mailing list, if we need to do the mailing list.
So we have to have it done five Tuesdays before the town meeting?
Five Tuesdays, it has to be submitted to the town clerk five Tuesdays before.
So five weeks before?
Five weeks.
Assuming town meeting is mid-March. We really like, yeah, and we don't have to hold them on our work sessions, we can hold them whenever, we can hold them in subsequent two weeks in a row, so we're not limited by our current schedule.
Right, so, so you have, in other words, you have plenty of time for a December, do you want to shoot for that?
Yeah, I'm, I'm hoping we'll have all the material together by then. And so let's aim for that and regroup in, at our work session in November in a couple weeks, just to make sure we feel like we can get everything ready to go.
Do you tell the owners before the hearing or after the hearing before town meeting? Does that work?
The notification goes out for this public hearing that we're probably, looks like we're going to have in December. Please come, you know, your zone, your property is sitting in a zone that will be affected. It's, you're getting this, it's just like when you get in a butter's notice, sort of thing.
Sure, okay.
So they'll, they'll have the date and how to connect with us, sort of thing.
Like, if we have to notice those zones where there's fewer than 100 property owners, seems like we should be noticing everybody in this case, because, you know what I mean? We might only have to, I don't know, what is it, I don't think?
Yeah.
Yeah, I would think it'd be good for them to know before town meeting, I would think.
Yeah, I think it has to be at the hearing, I would think, if we need to notice.
Makes sense, it's before for the public hearing for sure, I'm just wondering, even if we're not legally required to notice people in the ag zone and the Tenny Mountain mud telling you that, the Tenny Mountain Mixed Use District. If anyone in the agricultural, Tenny Mountain Highway, there's obviously more than, or I think there's probably more than 100 property owners in those. We don't, even if we don't legally have to notice them, it seems weird if we'd notice just the ones legally have to, I don't know.
Alright, we'll look into that.
So I was going to write a letter to, oh no, I did a letter to the editor, I can write a a press release for our next public, for our next hearing or a next invitation for input for early November. I'm afraid a lot of it will get lost in the noise of the election, but I'm happy to write something. I also think it might be helpful to have a frequently asked question about the zone, the zoning ordinance change. And is anyone particularly interested in throwing that together? If I can get it done. I have it on my plate right now, so I'm not sure if I'll be able to add that to it, but I'll see if I can get that done by our
Are you, I'd be happy to write a list of questions, the only problem is I don't have, I probably don't have the background yet to answer them, so I could write, put some questions together for you and then maybe that would save you a little time.
That, actually, I think I'd be better answering questions right now than asking them, so that would be really helpful.
Okay.
Think you have some in your video too, Rebecca?
Probably, yeah. I have not watched it, so
What?
Yeah, every time I see the still of that too, I just, you know, with the other one, yeah. Yeah, Mark, if you don't mind, in the next week, if you could get me a list of questions and that'll help me just, I feel, yeah, like I said, I think I'm better at just not having, the less creative part and just answering the questions, so
I'll form them as if I know nothing about the zoning changes and I'm a concerned citizen, how's that?
Sounds perfect. If anyone has questions, you can send them directly to me too, or send them to Mark and he can format them accordingly. Alright. Anything else zoning-wise? Any comments from the public about the zoning ordinance? Next up, I just wanted to chat a little bit about the site plan regs. And I know I just sent that email out yesterday saying maybe we could go over that. Did everyone get a chance to kind of look at the administrative site plan suggestions that Jules made and the site plan regs themselves? Yeah, so I think what we're looking at, I think we need a little more information. Basically, to change our site plan regs, we just need to bring the, we need to notice and have a public hearing to change our site plan regs. And I think that these go right into the the section three, the scope of review, and I think we just restructured that a full site plan review is required for, there's four points, and then an administrative site plan review is required if, you know, if the certain qualifications are met. So Jules, can you give us a little more background about why you said 5,000 square feet of gross floor area, the 500 square feet for accessory units?
Okay, yeah, I don't know about this first one, Madam Chair, I think that may have been something to do with Brian.
So you don't know what TRC is either?
T, TRC, that's Technical Review Committee, it's something that was taken from another book and I didn't know if, I kind of left it in there thinking, I don't know, maybe that's an option at Technical Review Committee. It can be ignored. Now, now this is, our accessory structures are, I think, over 100 feet now you have to, which is basically kind of every shed. So that was what prompted that, it's something Brian and I talked about, changing that. And it's, I took this from the Laconia Land Use, their administrative review. So it's just an arbitrary, never food for thought, but that's kind of where other towns have it and it'd make it a little easier as far as sheds. And then, you know, we talked about peppercorn moving down the street into true colors. So right now, they are going through site plan review because we don't have a mechanism for a change of use, so we could do a administrative review, which I think amounts to this change of use form, which we had in, you know, other towns have. And it just, it goes before the planning board, you fill it out, so you get all You fill it out, so you get all the details of the business, the proposed business, and the, um, planning board decides if it's within the scope. Um, it fits within that use, say, for instance, Village Commercial, uh, I guess you could limit it to, limit it to Village Commercial. Um, but, again, it's something for you to look at.
I think this is great, um, and for, and this is mostly for you, Mark, um, maybe you've heard this already, but we keep getting applications for the Village Commercial District that are, you know, it's a change of use, but it's, it's not changing the outside footprint, it's not changing traffic pattern, lighting, anything outside the structure. Um, and so we're putting applicants through this process that really, really isn't serving anybody. Um, and I really see our role in the application review process as really to facilitate a conversation between not just the town and the applicant, but between the applicant and the Butters, and I think we can still do this through the, um, through the administrative review, um, for site plan. Um, I think certainly in the, in the Village Commercial District, um, but even in other districts where there's really no, no change in outward use of the building, so there's no change in square footage, there's, um, no change in traffic patterns, um, things like that, so.
Now, in the example you gave, and I think we discussed this last time a little bit, would, if peppercorn is adding a commercial oven to True Colors, does that mean it would be, they would have to come before the board, or what type of change, is it just exterior?
So, I think right now, for cur, I mean, what, the future is undetermined, but, um, what's happening now is, we really have to determine, we have these sometimes long conversations about how much of a change of use is this, so yeah, peppercorn or add, to add a commercial kitchen, that wasn't a kitchen before, and then there's the question of, okay, there's a kitchen in that building, but in a different unit, that's, that's a whole different question right now. Um, but, um, so the answer is now becomes, so I think about, maybe even a better example is the existing, the new bubble tea place, that's where the Republican headquarters were. That, yeah, they added some kitchen facilities, it's, it's a change of use, but it really isn't changing, changing the site at all. Um, it's not changing how it impacts its neighbors, um, so we're putting them through this administrative hoop for, for really no reason.
Madam Chair, may I quick, uh, good thing, oh, sorry, go ahead, Bonnie.
Uh, yeah, I was just, is the bakery still going in with peppercorn?
I don't know.
I think that's the, the cash, the question, the bakery and the cafe.
Right, cause the last I, yeah, last I heard, they were both gonna be, uh, you know, it was gonna be both of them in there, I didn't know if that changed or not.
Yeah, I think, I mean, they're coming for site plan review, so I imagine we will stay tuned for the third Thursday in November.
Okay.
And we'll learn more.
Mm-hmm.
But, uh.
All right.
Yeah, um, but yeah, I think it's, I feel like we've had so many applicants that we keep saying, oh, this could be the perfect example of administrative. Um, I think the easiest thing to do right now, we, I mean, we could do more substantial changes, we could also just say, hey, the administrative site plan review is just for the Village Commercial District when there's no changes in, in outward, I mean, we could do something like that very easily and very quickly. Um, or we can, we can spend a little more time on it. And add, which I, I, I'm tend, I tend to think maybe if we spend, it's not a lot of time, but just a little bit more time getting, um, you know, trying to get it to cover as many things as we think it should. So.
All right, thank you.
Jules, did you have something else to say?
Just one, one quick note is, once you, uh, go through the change of use with the planning board, say for instance peppercorn comes forward, and there's something on there that, that the board votes, that they decide that, um, that they should come in for a full site plan review, then they have that option, so. Kind of a win-win for that.
I mean, it's really however we, we set it up at this point, as long as you're following the state statute, um, other ideas or comments or ideas on how to proceed forward? Um, you folks wanna take a closer look at this and then think about, um, think about what they'd like to see, just considering the other cases we've seen come before us that have been pretty minimal in impact. I think it's more like what we, what do we wanna see in the other, other zones? All right, so let's take it, let's, um, look at it over the next couple of weeks, and we'll add it to the agenda for our work session. Um, again, I hope we're gonna just be overwhelmed with participation from, um, our town in the zoning ordinance changes. But, uh, yeah, that is what, November 5th, I think? Um, all right, so let's look at it again, first week in November.
Thank you.
Thanks for putting that together, Jules. There's a couple other tiny changes that we should probably make in the site plan regs that are pretty basic, it's just, um, it's referencing a position, the community planner, which we currently don't have, um, so we should probably just change that to the town staff. Um, and then it specifies the North Country Council, which we should probably just change to a regional planning commission, so. Those are just some sort of general housekeeping things, so.
Yep, that's good too.
Yeah, and I'm gonna look at it even more closely and see, I know we, because of the, um, the lawsuit with the, um, the site on Fairgrounds Road. Um, Mark, you might not know this, but a decision we made, um, an application that we, um, did not approve, went to the Supreme Court and actually helped establish case law in the state of New Hampshire, which is kind of exciting, having to do with protection of wetlands. Um, but we still need to put wetlands in our site plan and subdivision regs, so, um, we'll probably figure out a place for that as we're making these changes as we're, I don't know, so. All right, um, Jules, pigs in the single-family residential?
Yeah.
Agriculture.
Oh yeah, it's been quite, uh, quite farming lately, a lot of farming type questions, so, yeah, so I'm sure you all looked at that, um, definition, anybody have any thoughts? Um, we have people asking for if they can keep a pig, or, um, they don't want their neighbors to have poultry, or, um, I've never had anybody ask for a garden, um, but apparently, you know, floriculture and horticulture isn't allowed, so. Um, I had asked Steve if, uh, he thought that that pertained to biz, uh, industry caliber agriculture or large scale or, or what, and he seemed to, to agree that it probably did, but if we could have a, a board weigh in on it, that would be wonderful.
I think it's pretty vague, um, and I think it seems like, I would have more questions if it didn't say floriculture and horticulture.
Yeah.
Um, because, I guess it's, it's like I need a definition for all these things. Um, because, you know, I'm growing flowers in my front yard, um, I'm in a single-family residential, um, what, what's the line, like, you know, but, you know, a pig is smellerier and noisier than, you know, my flowers, so.
So, so just a side note, Brian, uh, had been telling people, depending on, on the use, I think we, we told the pig person, no, it's probably not allowed, and, but, but for other people, I think it's been used, the best management practices put out by the UNH Cooperative Extension for, for animals. Uh, that's not official, but it's, it's certainly worth a thought. Um, it is, it's a tricky one, some, some towns outlaw roosters.
Right.
Um, yeah, so it's, but to, to outlaw chickens, I think there's a lot of people with chickens, so.
Yeah, there are people, I mean, and horses, I mean, there are horses in town.
Lots of horses, so, conditional use permit, I don't know.
So we don't have a conditional use permit, so I mean, for anything.
I know, yeah.
Technically, animal husbandry is the science of breeding and caring for farm animals, so. Or, I mean, the definition we have implies breeding, which, if you're keeping for your own use and not, you know, if, if you're buying chicks and raising them for egg birds, that's not breeding.
Right.
Right, yeah.
Technically, but.
Not commercial.
Not, it's not commercial, but at the same time, you know, people may choose to keep a pig or a cow, even, for, you know, they, they may choose to raise one at home, kind of as a pet, and it, it may become dinner later too, and, you know, the question, I think it's a valid question, you know, a Butters should have some recourse, um, whether it be, you know, increased setbacks, or, you know, chickens like to roam free, some people might not want, you know, chickens in their yard, if their neighbors have chickens, it's, it's tough.
My dog really liked it when our neighbor said chicken.
Did the chickens make it?
Did. Um, yeah, I, I don't think we, to me, it just doesn't seem like it expressly outlaw, outlaws it. Um, because we're not talking about commercial use, so it's, I think it's hard for us to weigh in on something that's not specifically a, that's a tricky thing for us to weigh in on, I think. You know, I think there's certainly like noise violations, which is definitely beyond our purview, um, but pigs are kinda smelly too, uh, that's a, a different issue, so.
Well, we do have an ordinance about noxious use.
Okay.
So that would probably cover that.
Yeah, so I, I feel like that is best served by the, yeah, that type of ordinance rather than the zoning ordinance. I don't know.
Yeah, that's a B.
I'd be curious to see if Steve has any novel ways of, um, lang, u- utilizing language that protects individuals' rights to privacy and, you know,
Yeah.
you know, noise while allowing, um, you know, the increased, um, keeping of animals for personal use. You know, hu- husbandry of, you know, breeding for sale, that's a different thing than keeping for yourself, but.
And just trying to blanket single-family residential too, I'm pretty sure the single-family residential goes all the way up, um, goes at least to the intersection at Thurlow and Texas Hill, right?
We have the map right here.
I don't even know what district I'm in.
Or is that, is that ag, I'm just thinking like, I'm in the single-family residential and, I don't know, I don't think, if I got a pig or a horse, um, but, um, but it's hard to blanket that with, you know, there are horses just up the street and, um, you know, chickens, you know, half a block, or, you know, half a block away, so. So.
Yeah, I do have the single-family map, are you got?
We don't necessarily need to know what it is, Mark, you're thinking about what's allowed and where.
Right.
So, could I possibly, Madam Chair, have a vote on, saying that it's non-commercial, uh, it's pertaining to non-commercial at this point, or?
I mean, I don't know if it's something we necessarily need to vote on, um.
Or just a consensus or something?
I would, I would move that individuals keeping, um, poultry and even farm animals for their own use does not constitute husbandry and is not prohibited under our zoning ordinance definition of agriculture.
I would agree with that.
Can we just do, is a consensus sufficient for you, Jules? Or do you, we need to have a vote on record, this is just not something we, I've really had a view before.
Oh, yeah, I don't, I don't need a vote, but if everybody wants to.
Phil, are you okay with not having a vote if we just sort of generally, general consensus?
I am.
Is there any, anyone opposed? Okay.
Right, um. Yeah, anything else from the board? Um, John, have you been enticed to join us yet?
Hello there.
John lives up the street from me, I've talked to him before about potentially, uh, being interested in joining the board, so.
Nice.
Yeah, no pressure to speak.
I'm interested, I'm, at this point, I'm just kind of looking in, I, I think I was here one other time as well, and, uh, just seeing what's going on and trying to understand the process a bit.
That's, that's how Mark, that's how we roped Mark in.
Yeah.
Don't know what you're missing.
Yeah. Awesome, well, thanks for, thanks for popping in, John.
Thank you.
Sorry for putting you on the spot there, um, all right, um, has any member of the public drifted in?
Yeah.
Aside from John?
No, 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 Madam Chair.
Okay, so unless there's, um, any other comments, items for discussion, then, um, someone can maybe make a motion to get out of here.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Thanks, Mark, all right. Joel, um, all those in favor of adjourning, say aye, Mark?
Aye.
Phil?
Nay.
That never gets old, does it?
I keep wondering what's gonna happen if there, if enough people vote nay.
I don't know, we, I think we, we do have something in our bylaws that say our meetings can't go past 10:30, I think.
Okay.
Hmm.
So at a certain point you will be overruled, but, uh, you know, we've got, you know, another three hours, um, sorry, Mary Ann, did you say aye?
Aye.
Uh, Bonnie?
Aye.
And I also say aye.